I am pleased to welcome you to the June 15 Select Board Meeting for your community. I'm Lauren Barnes and this is my final meeting as Chair of this illustrious arm of your town government. I'm joined, of course, by my colleagues Jim McCaffrey and Pete Germaine and also Michael Gazinski from our -- as the Town Administrator and Karen Barre. And I can see cadre of both department heads and interested business owners, so we're very happy to have you on board. The first order of business is a variety of announcements and I will jump in before I forget this one, but I just was informed for everybody that's planning on spending their July 4th at the transfer station, you will be very sad because the transfer station will not be open on July 4th. However, it will be open on Friday, July 3rd, so you can get all your pre-party materials taken care of. They will be open, the transfer station will be open from 8:00 to 11:00 in the morning and then from 12:00 to 3:30 on Friday, July 3rd. So for everybody who thought they were going to spend the holiday at the transfer station, you will be very lonely. I'm now going to ask our Town Administrator to provide an update as to our COVID-19 specific responses as we move into the reopening Phase 2, which affects some local facilities for the community. Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to begin by just talking a little bit about the election. Some of the preparations are ongoing here. As the Board is aware, we've been preparing a number of ways for that. And one of the specific items I wanted to talk about was on the day of the election, I am recommending that Board authorize that all town employees that are not actually working in direct relation to the election work from home that day, trying to keep the traffic flowing in the building as well as possible. There will be some staff that will be working to assist the election, but those that aren't directly involved yet work from home. And I would encourage all those voters in the public who have not done so, still have the opportunity to get an absentee ballot. And they can do that until this Friday, so I ask for thank you to those that want to come vote in person. We've still been preparing for that, for their safety in the building that day. So I've also had some discussions with the Health Director in regards to reopening process at the Veterans Forum, though, that as per the requirements of Phase 2 of the Commonwealth's reopening plan, town halls may open for appointments with a number of restrictions. So I'm also recommending that the BMB open to the public for appointments effective June 23rd, the day after the town election. And then later in the month, I'll be discussing with the Board when the appropriate time to open for regular walk-in traffic, of course, with precautions. I would expect that phase to begin sometime in the early, the middle part of July, depending on when the Governor moves to Phase 3. So I'd be happy to answer any questions in regards to that. And I believe the Police Chief is online as well, in case there's any other questions. He is our Assistant American Management Director, so if there's any questions about anything else in regards to COVID, we'd be happy to answer that. And I know that Mr. Weiss will be speaking shortly about economic development aspects of COVID and trying to get us back on track here.
I'd like to just amplify a couple things that the Town Administrator mentioned about the election, just to make sure people are not surprised. Number one is, yes, absentee ballots can be picked up till Friday, but have to be done by noon time. So if you're going to apply for an absentee ballot, you've got to apply by noon on Friday, which is the statutory requirement from the state. If you have an absentee ballot, you may turn it in anytime until 11:00 PM on Monday. So just to make sure that folks who have already gotten one or would like to make sure they get a chance to vote without coming into town hall, that's still going to be the case, up until all the close of the polls at 7:00 on Monday. So we do have, as I understand, literally hundreds and hundreds of absentee ballots, so it looks like we have a pretty good turnout just with respect to absentees alone, so that's good news. And one other thing I'd like to make sure the public is aware, and I'm sure most people are, when you get your ballot and you cast your vote for the offices that are being up for election, please be sure to turn the ballot over, the paper ballot, because on the other side, there'd be important vote on the change in the Charter formally about the Select Board nomenclature. So please don't, please be sure you turn that over, so you get to vote on that important issue as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I think we're in the Grand Canyon.
We are. Sorry, hold on.
Okay. So do you need a vote from us, Mr. Gazinski, or are you comfortable with us saying we have no objections, just to continue that?
We don't need a formal vote. If not, I have the general consent of the Board that I'm asking for this evening. And Madam Chair, I know you and I talked about this a little earlier today briefly, but there has been some questions about the brand-new tennis courts and when they'll be available to the public. I did speak with the Vice Chair of the ESBC earlier today, Diane Germaine, and she confirmed that they anticipate that the construction of the tennis courts should be completed by the first week of July. So they should be, assuming we don't back up in phases or have any relapses, where the Governor has to switch phases around, we should be able to open those to the public right around the first week of July to tennis. Pickleball, we'll have to get a further confirmation from the Health Director on pickleball, because pickleball, the players are in a little closer contact with each other than tennis, but it's something we'll look into and address at an upcoming Select Board meeting.
Any other questions, Mr. Germaine? Any other questions? Now, you're all good?
I'm fine.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Weiss and the Town Administrator to address, to inform the Board about a very visible, as you can see from your slide, very visible initiative of the Independent Millis Business Task Force that began collaborating earlier this spring.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just a update on what's going on with what is now known as the Independent Reopening Task Force, or that may change, but for now, that's what the Task Force is calling itself. This was, of course, the committee that was, the Select Board gave its unanimous approval to back, to start up back in the end of April. I do want to give credit to staff members from the Millis Public Library and also to the volunteers from the Economic Development Committee of the town, because they made an incredible effort to reach out to hundreds of businesses, looked up numbers, and spoke to the businesses to get this Task Force established, which it has been. It now meets regularly. As a community, a former community organizer, it gives me great pleasure to see it growing and maturing. We have a Facebook presence. We have seen leadership emerge. We have a media person and we have a database that we can now use to very effectively reach out to folks in the business community. The first campaign, as you can see before you, is called Make It Millis. Right now, what's going to happen is cards will be produced, consumers, residents will be able to purchase these discount cards. Right now, we're looking at a card that will be 10% off every participating business every Tuesday. And it's open to, the cards will cost $5 apiece for consumers, but the retailers and restaurants that will participate, there will be no cost there, in an effort to get them back on their feet. Right now, we do have a sponsor, a single sponsor, which is Main Street Mobile. Cards, they will be paying for the cards and also for the decals that each participating business will have. I think what you're looking at right now is a copy of the decal, or at least a prototype of the decal. Cards can be purchased at Main Street Mobile. The Task Force is not an official organization yet, it's not a 501(c)(3) or anything like that, so the proceeds will be going to some local charity, most likely it's going to be the Food Pantry, but we'll announce that later on. We will have plans coming to expand the sales locations where people can pick up the cards. We looked into having it done at town hall. Town Council informed us this morning that that probably won't be able to happen because of, well, I'll let Town Council explain it, if we needed, the anti-aid amendment to the state constitution. So I don't think we want to go across the state constitution for that. But as details and accomplishments occur, I will gladly send updates to the Select Board. For now, the Task Force continues to develop its first campaign and plans and events for more campaigns are coming, and we will be hoping to open the Millis Academy. We'll thank you.
Great. Are there any questions for Bob? Are there any, yeah, the birds. Are there any questions that anybody has for Bob on this, or any comments from members of the Task Force? Oh, I see people shaking their heads, you're participants, so we assume that Mr. Jacobs, you're here also as a participant in his program, correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir. Big enthusiastic smile on that. We're thrilled to have you. Thank you very much. We did just cover a little bit, but I don't know if I can say again that ballots are due as per the information shared with you by my colleague, Mr. McCaffrey. So if you have not dropped yours off, please do so. If you need to get one and do an immediate turnaround in the parking lot, you can call 376-7046 during business hours and one will be brought out to you on the stairs, or in fact, you can, it will be left in the bin on the top of the stairs. You can complete it and return it to the bins. You don't have to worry about the mail, per se. You can still exercise your right to vote in advance. And it is a two-sided ballot, which is very important. And all the information about the election, the ballot in particular, as well as the town meeting warrant for the town meeting on June 29th, is posted on the website. With that, are there any other comments or questions by my colleagues? Hearing none, I'm going to invite, for scheduled business, I'm going to invite Chief Saffire as the Chair of the Charter Review Committee to give everybody, this is, today obviously is a wrap meeting of fiscal year '20, and so I'm going to ask Chief Saffire to update both the Board and the community as to what's been going on and what will continue to be going on for the Charter Review Committee. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Charter Review Committee, we've met several times prior to COVID-19, and we have interviewed several key stakeholders, to include the entire Board, the entire Select Board, as well as Mr. Gazinski. And, you know, the virus presented several challenges, which kind of kept us meeting and getting together and whatnot. I did reach out to the Board. We're going to continue, continue our job throughout the summer. I think we're going to meet right after the election. And our plan is to have a report back to the Board by October prior to the fall town meeting.
Lauren, we can't hear you. Hold on.
You're muted.
I apologize. You'd think I'd get this down. Does anybody have any questions for the Chief about this? And if not, I was just going to ask if the Chief and/or Mr. McCaffrey could explain the next step with respect to the Charter Review Commission, so that people understand the process.
So our committee has been reviewing the town charter, interviewing the key stakeholders, and once we get all the information we need, we are going to present any potential recommendations to the Board for them to consider.
Okay. Anybody else? Oops, sorry. Anybody else? No? All right, sounds good. The very patriotic Robert Brutus Canaragi is on the phone as our Tree Warden, and that is because with Jim McKay from the DPW and their team, they've spent now several months going through Millis with the untenable task of selecting the most dangerous trees that have been affected by drought or blight or some combination thereof for removal. And since that time, they have received, needless to say, a lot of community interest and feedback when trees weren't taken down. So to provide an update tonight as to what has been done and what is, will hopefully be forthcoming with future funding is our Tree Warden, Brutus Canaragi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next slide.
Bear with me.
Okay.
Oops. Hmm. Oh, there it is. Oh, there's fancy graphics.
I just said it a couple times. I just want to give folks at home, just like an update. You know, we lost a lot of trees in Millis. We were actually one of the hotspots for the state, and it was particularly because we got a severe drought, gypsy moth, and then we were lucky enough to get the ash-bore beetle. So not good for Millis. I think folks have known over the last 18 months, we just allotted dead trees in town. Next slide. So I got to give credit to Jim McKay. He spent a lot of time with N-Star, working with their Tree Warden, and they did an unbelievable job of pruning trees in town. They also removed a ton of trees in town that potentially could have been problems, and I'm talking thousands and thousands of dollars' worth. This has completely changed. You know, 10 years ago, before we had those hurricanes, it was very difficult to get N-Star in to do anything, but they've been very good. And Mr. Gonzalez has just been great to work for, and he's really done a benefit to town. So they kind of went through first and removed a lot of trees, and then we followed up. Next slide. So I think you're familiar, we had this specialty tree company come in, and they removed over 200 trees in town, and, but we still, we still got a lot more to do. We saved a lot of money. You know, Ackman appropriated $50,000 last year, and Jim used some of that for individual trees as needed, but then this company came in and hit some hard areas, particularly the Baltimore Street area, Myrtle Street, section to Pleasant Street, Village. So a lot of work was done, and like I said, over 200 trees in very cost-effective manner. I saw different ways of running it, but it was less than $200 a tree taken down, which I think if anybody's had a tree work, that's, that's pretty short money. Next slide. So going forward, next slide. So these are some areas of town that there's still a lot of trees to be removed, particularly Forest Road, Birch Road, some on Dover, Norfolk Road, Middlesex Street, Orchard Street, Ridge Street. These are some areas, obviously the older roads in town that significant trees. There's a lot of trees out there that still need to be done, need to be taken care of. And the thing that's tough is I get called all the time about the trees, and we determine they are a town tree, and I notify Mr. McKay, but there's no money to go down and take these. So a lot of this is a liability waiting to happen, and truthfully, we're going to spend money now, we're going to spend exponentially money later on, because if one of these trees go down just at night, you know, we have to get the public works people in, we have to call the people to assist us. The costs associated with taking one tree down in emergency is very, very expensive compared to a planned systematic removal of different trees. So we, we still got a lot of trees, and it also puts us as a town in a tough position because these trees are a liability towards the town. They, you know, they've been identified as hazard trees. If they do fail, they cause property damage or personnel damage or injury, the town could be held liable. Next slide. I talked to you about this last time. There's also a lot of trees out there that are on private property that the town can notify the folks at, that they need to remove these hazard trees, because if they do fall into the public right of way, the town has the right to backcharge them for that work if they're notified. And additionally, you know, folks need to know, if they got that big old ash tree in front of their house and it's going to fail, and it falls on a car or someone else, they can be held liable for that, especially if it's been notified. So I think we need to get, you know, a program about getting letters out to folks, if that's the, if that's the view of the Select Board. Next slide. So I'm begging for more money. I know everybody else is begging for money, but we need money, and I'd hope we could look at this as, you know, it's not an operating type thing, it's technically a standing emergency that we need to take care of, and if we don't take care of it, it's going to, like I said, cost more money. I think that's, this is one of the reasons why the town has a reserve fund, you know, that we could get maybe another appropriation out of the reserve fund to get some more of this work done before these trees start to fall. Additionally, you know, we got free cash coming up in the fall, that we could replenish that money, and I'm sure with everything that's going on in town, the new growth numbers are going to be pretty substantial. So if we get another funding source, get some more of these trees down, it will definitely help the town in the long run. Next slide. Any questions?
No, I think that this is really helpful, and unfortunately, we suffered a lot of tree loss in our own property, so I think it's important to know that, you know, we're not hamstrung by talent, knowledge, or intent, we're hamstrung by budget. And that's what the town needs to know, and I think it was really creative and strategic use of the partnership with Eversource to actually be able to piggyback with them, because we got more tree removal as a result that we didn't have to fund, which was great. And I know that you put together a team that also was probably in some respects below market rate, so thank you very much.
Do you have a question?
Please.
Bruce, do you have any idea how many trees need to be removed at this time?
It's probably similar to last time. You're probably looking at somewhere around, you know, $50,000, $60,000 worth of tree worth.
Okay, so you're talking...
Numbers-wise?
Four or 500 trees?
No, it's probably in, you know, substantial trees, I'd probably say 150 trees. But don't forget, if you have a regular, you know, when I say substantial tree, this is a tree that's, you know, 18 inches, 24 inches, 36 inches, you know, big trees that need to come down. So real hazard trees.
Okay.
I think, you know, as I drive around town, I think if anybody goes to, particularly go the corner of Birch and Forest, there's just a lot of trees there. You know, going down Orchard Street, there's a bunch of big trees that need to come down.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes.
Good. So first off, I want to thank the Tree Warden for working so closely with us, with the DPW. For one, I mean, we get more calls on rotten trees and trees need to be taken down than we do on potholes, if you can believe that. Luckily, this year we had a contract through the MMA that we had, this head of mayor, tree company was on it, and they're a partner with our tree service, so we didn't have to go out to bid on this, and it shortened that window, and it was lucky he had an opening to take trees down, and he came in and he gave us a couple of weeks, so I want to thank him, too. On the trees taken down, I can tell you that Eversource was a great partner, and it brought us being, you know, the director over in Franklin did help with Mr. Gonzalez. They took down 92 trees, which was a substantial-sized trees, these just weren't little tiny ones. That was reported at a meeting when this first was brought to attention. In this last, with the $50,000, we took down an estimated 282 trees throughout Millis. Some substantial, some smaller. I think if one, if all you have to do is drive down hemifob, and you could see the size, diameter of trees that were taken down. You went from, you know, what Brutus, what, 12-inch to some huge trees. And I think that's the type of work that we need to look going forward with this type of work. And we have this contract with the company for another year. Not sure if they'll, you know, they'll get it in the next go-around. A lot of tree companies don't like bidding on municipal work, because they have to have somebody at the willing ready for, during storms and stuff like that. So again, we thank Brutus, and if we took down 374 trees in less than a year, that's pretty substantial. And I think Mr. Germaine's question, how many more? Probably that, if not double, that need, still need to be taken down.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to add one thing. I think it's important for the folks to know, it's, and I'll say it's frustrating for me, and I know it's probably frustrating for Jim. I mean, me as a Tree Warden, I can go out there and determine that it's a town tree, but I can't, it's not me to take it down. So we're not, we're not getting back to our residents, saying that, yep, it's the right tree, it should come down, and then when it's going to happen, I don't know. That's a, that's a tough message to give folks, that, you know, if they got a big tree in front of their house or something happens. So it puts particularly Jim in, you know, a tough position, because we, I think we all know we have excellent customer service, and we want to help our residents out, but we don't necessarily have the resources and, you know, I'm not, it's just, a lot of these trees can be potentially dangerous, and that's just what I'm trying to get out there to folks. I mean, it's not a, it's not a luxury that we're trying to, I'm not asking for pruning money, I'm not asking to make those oak trees in front of town hall pretty, I'm just trying to take stuff down. You know, we joke in Millis, you know, our pruning program is a removal program. That's when we finally take a tree down, when it's actually going to fail or die or knock something over, and that's when we do it, so. And now we got a lot of them.
Who's got the birds?
I think it's Brutus.
That would be me.
That's the Tree Warden. Excellent. We appreciate the staging and the birds, that's awesome. Does anybody else have any question for the Tree Warden or for the DPW Director on this particular matter? Mr. Canaragi, thank you very much. I'm now going to introduce a combination of Bob Weiss, who's our Economic Development Director, Attorney Kate Federoff as Town Counsel, and John Jacob, who is one of the owners of Napper Tandies Restaurant, and they have come pursuant to this Board's approval of outside seating parameters that require a one-time permitting when the seating area proposed is town property. And they're going to walk us through a proposal for Napper Tandies, which hopefully we can get this at the right access, and so I'm going to let Mr. Weiss take it from here.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. John Jacob and Robin Bryant are here from Napper Tandies. John is the owner. And tonight, we're asking the Select Board to review and approve a temporary lease license for John Jacob doing business as Napper Tandy. They have a common dictural license and an alcohol license. They're looking for approximately 3,300 square feet from our municipal parking lot. You can see in the graphic there, it's 65, 66 feet deep, about 5,000. You can see in the graphic there, it's sixty-five, sixty-six feet deep, about fifty feet wide. The lease will terminate November first, 2020, so it runs parallel with the outdoor dining permit, which they received last week from the staff. In your packet, you'll see at the end of the lease, there's an Exhibit A, which locates the property under town's GAS map. Exhibit B shows a little bit more detail. Napper Tandies will present more detailed information to the town staff as part of the licensing permitting. Those details illustrate how they will isolate the dining area from the traffic in a safe way from traffic in the parking lot. The town's fire department, police department, the building department, and the Board of Health have all signed off on the permit, so I'm asking that the motion to approve license also tonight, make sure it includes that termination date of November first, 2020.
I believe, Mr. Weiss, the rule of the State House is, from the State House on this, is either November first, 2020, or by rescission of the governor's emergency order, whichever comes first. So I wouldn't want to be voting in something for November first if the governor says October fifteenth is the end.
I would think that's correct. I would put that whole statement in, just as you said.
Trying to keep this a little bit narrow. Do any of my colleagues have questions about this? Obviously, it's been reviewed by the public safety stakeholders and Board of Health?
Yes.
I have a question, just for clarification, from the petitioner, Mr. Weiss. As I look at this, since I went over there today and looked at the spot, it's between the sidewalk and the, kind of like a little bit of a barrier between this end of the parking lot and the next end, it's sort of dead-end cul-de-sac, really. Is that right, I have that right?
Yes.
There's no way out, other than the way you came in. And I wondered about, I think there's a handicapped parking space in the lower right-hand corner of this picture. Does that continue to be available as a handicap spot?
It's still available.
Okay.
It would be in the bottom right.
Yes, the bottom right, it's already...
Towards Cravings, towards Cravings patio.
Yes.
In the middle, actually.
So that's still gonna be available?
Yes. And also, the sidewalk has two handicapped accesses, one to the left and one to the right in front of the gap pocket, so that customers can use the restrooms.
The restrooms will be inside?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Jermaine?
I looked at it, and I thought it was appropriate.
And we are, Mr. Weiss, we're expecting Cravings to come forward with a comparable plan?
Well, I did speak with them on Friday, and they said they would be coming in with something this week.
I just want to make sure we're not taking away space, one detrimental to the other, so I just want to make sure we're being equitable with the town real estate.
No, I believe that Napper Tandies and Cravings have been talking about this for a while, so they're both acceptable to this plan, and it looks like it is an equitable plan.
I would like to know from the Napper Tandies folks when this will be operational, assuming you get a favorable vote this evening?
We have to go out and source furniture, which right now is kind of difficult to get, so we'd hope to have it operational mid-of-next week, best-case scenario.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor if there are no other questions or comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
There seems to be another question, was there another question?
I just have a comment, Madam Chair.
Please.
So we were asked if we had Jersey barriers, we're checking into that to see if we can block off, it would be a safer entryway, so, you know, the entrance where the cars would pull in, where the tables are gonna be. We are checking into that to see, we may have one that we may be able to, you know, put towards this use. And we are having all the vans, the school vans, and they need to be moved out of there to open up more spaces, so we are in contact with the school, us people, to get, you know, move those vans out of there. There's no reason why we can't move them over to one of the school parking lots.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I just wanted to add one more thing as far as the ABCC is concerned, which is the Alcohol Licensing Commission, for those who don't know what that acronym means, there's only one means of egress, as you can see, so when people come, they'll have one means of going in and out. So when this gets sent, this whole application will also get sent to the ABCC, and it will show them, there's one means of egress, and it will show the number of tables that are put there, that's what they have to stick with, they can't suddenly put more tables or reconfigure once drawing goes in, that's how it stays, so we're in good shape for that, too.
Excellent. Would any of my colleagues like to make a motion?
Madam Chair?
Please.
Yes, I move that the select board approve the license for use of a public parking area for Napper Tandies for the period up until November first, earlier than November first, or the end of the emergency quarter. And the town administrator execute the license on behalf of the town.
I'll second that.
So moved and seconded, I will pull the board, Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
With Barnes, yes. Congratulations, Napper Tandies, we're looking forward to big things, and I just want to say that we hope that you will continue to participate vigorously in, with the reopening task force group that Mr. Weiss is the connection for, and all the future activities that will emerge from there. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great, congratulations. Congrats.
Thank you all.
Okay, next up.
Madam?
Yes.
I was wondering if you'd consider just taking up, the board considered taking up item 119, it should be brief, and that way it would allow the financial structure to get back to EAP, and that would be the Department of Revenue approval for deficit spending?
Yep, if you could explain it, I'm happy to, to the community, I'm familiar with it, and I've spoken with Carol, but if you would like to explain this to the community between the two of you, that would be fine. Skip an item and...
Thank you, I will start briefly and let Carol take over the point details. Essentially, as part of the legislation, special legislation approved this spring by the state legislature, it did enable, well, it did enable towns to take certain actions in regards to deficit spending, but it does require approval by the board, and also subsequent approval by the Department of Revenue for deficit spending, and I just want to explain what that means a little bit. Essentially, there are a number of federal and state grants that we are currently receiving and will be receiving as part of the COVID-19 pandemic. Usually, if we receive a grant, and we spend money associated with that grant, and we haven't yet received the grant funds, and the end of the fiscal year comes and goes, that difference between the funds we spent and the funds we received by the state is really held as a liability by the Department of Revenue against the town, and reduces our free cash in the fall by authorizing this deficit spending through the board and with approval by the state. This will hold the town harmless for our free cash certification, and therefore won't harm our financial position going into the fall town meeting. So that's the ten-thousand-foot explanation that I will ask Carol to talk about just a little more, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have in regards to the specifics of this.
Thank you. Last week, there was a meeting with the DLR and the Massachusetts Municipal Association, where the Department of Revenue requested all towns that are not going to have their town meeting by today, June fifteenth, to submit for a request for emergency spending. That way, it won't impact the cities and towns when it comes to free cash certification in the fall. We'll be setting up two special revenue accounts, as I mentioned last week, one for FEMA reimbursement and one for the CARES Act. All of these spendings will go against both these special revenue accounts, and in the fall, when they do the certification for free cash, any special revenue account in deficit count against your free cash. By requesting from the Director of Accounts this emergency liability and excessive appropriations during COVID-19 spending, this will eliminate their charging against our free cash for any deficit in these two accounts as of June thirtieth.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, that's actually crystal clear, don't you think?
Yeah, it is.
I think that, isn't the issue here to allow deficit spending so that we can then turn around and collect CARES Act or FEMA reimbursement without affecting our budget calculations for free cash for 2020? Isn't that the bottom line?
Yes, that's correct.
And it's an unusual thing, we couldn't do it except for this emergency legislation. So it just gives us flexibility, is the difference. Is that correct?
That's correct. Mr. Jermaine?
It was summarized just fine, just the plan of the bill, no problem with that.
Mr. Kazinsky, do you need a motion of approval for the chair to execute this submission?
Yes, we do.
So do we have a motion?
I would make a motion that the board approve the recommendation of the town administrator and the town finance director to authorize, in accordance with Master of Health, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one, a deficit spending amount up to three-hundred thousand dollars.
Seconded.
So moved and seconded, I will pull the board, Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
With Barnes, yes. So Carol, if you send me that document, I'll be happy to sign.
Okay, fantastic, thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate all that you're doing. Busy time, a lot of extra financial reporting. Next up, I'm actually gonna skip and do another really brief, Mr. Kazinsky, the SEIU Amendment Agreement, which is Agenda Item 2118?
Yes, Madam Chair. As the board is aware, we've been in discussions and some negotiations with the SEIU in regards to some changes related to our operations next year, resulting from some expected revenue loss and the need to make some certain budget adjustments. The draft MOA in your packet outlines the terms of the agreement with the SEIU. I believe it's a fair agreement, it was negotiated in good faith between the parties. It's been reviewed and approved by Attorney Jenkins, and I'd be happy to answer any final questions the board has. As you can see, that the union members expressed their approval of the document, and I'm asking the board to approve the document and authorize me to sign on behalf of the board.
We appreciate the cooperation with the union. Do my colleagues have any comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Jermaine?
Seconded.
Okay. Do you need a motion on this, Mr. Kazinsky?
Yes, I would just ask that the board vote to approve the MOA negotiated with the SEIU, as presented in the board's packet this evening, and authorize me to sign on behalf of the board.
Can I just say, so moved?
Yes.
So moved and seconded. I will pull the board to accept this recommendation of the town administrator, Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
With Barnes, yes. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
What's town council doing, is she doing well?
I can make a quick comment.
I'm good, I'm good.
For anyone who has any questions. We had notification of this from the town administrator earlier, so I did have questions at that time, but he answered the question.
Okay, excellent. The next topic is Agenda Item 2116, which is the Town Administrator Performance Review, for which the select board, as an institutional unit of government, was ably assisted by Attorney Kate Federoff for the development of a grounds-up process that had not existed in its current construct. And by statute, two things happened, one is that the highlights, the outcomes of this have to be presented in public forum, and two, that we get the summary document of this, I think, five minutes ago. So Attorney Federoff, if you could take the floor and review the process, and take us through whatever is the appropriate level of discussion for this, so that we can wrap this up as part of fiscal twenty.
Sure, sure. So, and you exactly summarized it correctly, because there was a recent open meeting law decision that went through the court system, and it was specifically regarding TA performance reviews, so it made the process a little more cumbersome than it has been in the past, because there can't be deemed to have been any deliberation among the board members, so each board member essentially has to be kept in the dark until the evaluation is made public. So hence, I'm your middleman this evening. And what we did in this process is first created the process, because this document, this evaluation document was newly devised this year, and it was made to be more of a qualitative assessment of Mike Kazinsky's performance, with the idea that that should be a springboard for going forward and achieving the board's expectations. So the way the process worked is we created a document which was evaluating several key aspects of Mr. Kazinsky's job duties, and those categories were created based on what his job description said, as well as the requirements of the bylaws and state law. So once that document was created, each board member was instructed to complete their evaluation tool, describe how they felt he performed in each category, each tool then, or document was submitted to Mike, who then met with each of the members of the board individually, discussed the evaluation, if modifications needed to be made, those were made, and he had the opportunity to respond. And then everything was submitted to me, as an independent person, not a member of the board, I compiled the summaries of each category and put it in a single document along with Mike's responses. So, and because the board just got the compilation document two or three minutes before the meeting began, I prepared a brief kind of summary of the summary. So essentially, what is an overarching conclusion from the summary that I thought was that Mike Kazinsky essentially met his expectations, and there were some suggestions that were made to improve upon the improvements he already brought to the position. So in terms of general duties, which was the first criteria, it was noted by most of the members that he's a thoughtful decision-maker, and brings a lot of experience to the table, which is a real benefit to the town. And he created positions which were much needed in order to professionalize the governmental operations. So the next step from there is to capitalize on those relationships and the new positions and relationships within town, outside of town, et cetera, in order to push the town even further forward. So efficiencies in government operations are the next step, essentially, and the expectation of the board going forward. On select board support, which was the second facet that was analyzed by each of the members, essentially, again, he was a good resource for the town select board members because of his broad experience and knowledge that he brought to the table. And to capitalize on this experience going forward, it is recommended that he be more forceful in giving direction to the Board, saying, "This is the better course of action. This is my recommendation," as opposed to leaving several recommendations for the option of the Board to figure out what's the best. It's better to recommend and be a little more forceful in the approach, but otherwise, a strong support of the Board. In terms of financial and resource management, the members pretty much universally agreed that he had a good understanding of the budget development process. But again, he's encouraged to create better efficiencies and tools to not only keep everyone informed of the process and the deadlines going forward, but to be more transparent to the public. So the public participants, I guess, in the process in a different way. In terms of economic development and planning, again, there was a lot of growth and development in the town. The creation of Bob Wies's position was a real benefit to the town, according to most of the members. And again, continuing on that momentum, it is the expectation of the Board that Mike works within the relationships, not only within the town, but externally, so with the Chamber and other external resources to continue this positive growth pattern. In terms of leadership and communication, the general consensus was that Mike is a busy, busy guy. And as a consequence, the thing that may fall off is internal communications with the staff because he's otherwise so occupied by dealing with all of these major projects. So the idea is to get out there with the town staff, again, build on those relationships, relationships rather, make sure the communication is clear and concise with staff, and get some essentially buy-in from the staff on all these other projects. And then the final, oh no, Personnel Director. Again, there was general consensus that Mike had a great personality and approach to personnel matters, although there were times when, again, his time was occupied by other seemingly pressing matters, so that the Personnel Director portion of his job was not necessarily immediately attended to. But when attended to, he did it in a way that was effective because he worked collaboratively with the employees. He also built great relationships with the unions, which is really critical to personnel development within the town. So it was all generally pretty positive, but again, the need to prioritize sometimes detracted from that. And finally, the last category was just a miscellaneous category about ideas for the future. And the consensus was pretty much universal, that Mike is a great leader, has a superior working knowledge, brings a lot to the table. There needs to be a little more direct and decisiveness by Mike and ensure that there's absolute follow-through on all the projects and the follow-up details. And that was really it. So it was all in all, a very positive evaluation with a lot of thoughtful ideas for the future to build upon what's already gone on in the town. And that's it.
So that was a summary of a very detailed process for those of us who, and this will be a summary report that will be public, is that correct, Attorney Fedorov?
That's absolutely right. The summary is public, each individual evaluation, because it's not a Board decision, when it's on an individual basis, it's given in the personnel file.
So I would like to say, my colleagues, I believe, will echo this, that first of all, Attorney Fedorov had no easy job. All of us were very, we were very busy, we had a lot of opinions, and she basically had to take three fairly comprehensive narrative documents and mesh them into one. This is not a Likert scale, or agree or strongly disagree. It is a very detailed action plan that's in the narrative form. I think in that respect, I hope that our Town Administrator feels that it offers a lot more value. I will say for myself that I thought that the process was really well-run, and I think that the findings seem to be fairly universal. And more to the point, in a 360-degree review process, our Town Administrator seemed to be largely in agreement with the observations, and short of cloning himself for more time, is going to be looking for the new Board to continue to work with him in terms of establishing priorities and perhaps pushing some of the things that arrive in his office into new directions. But I think overall, it was really fair, and I will say for myself what I said to him at the time when we met, which is now you know, and when we did his contract, which I would like to announce again, that before this process, this process was underway when the Board did go forward and execute a new contract. And I want to thank our Town Administrator outwardly for setting a new standard for Melissa, that the contract has a performance incentive clause, which is a very rare thing. I think Attorney Fedorov will vouch for that in the government context. It's very common in the private sector, and it has become, it will be a management tool, and in fact, was then similarly done in the contract with our fire chief. So I think out of this, we have, for the town, a new level of accountability by adding this to contracts. And I think any performance review is a springboard. So it's not about going backward, it's about taking the legacy information and using that to provide some focus and direction for moving forward. So I want to thank all my colleagues and the Town Administrator and Town Council for going through the process. And I'll open the floor to my colleagues who might want to say something, and then certainly to the Town Administrator. Mr. McCaffrey, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't add too much, I just want to make sure that everyone understands that this was an evaluation of a period which exceeded two years. So I think that in addition to developing a process we have as a Board, we are committing ourselves to an annual review, not a triennial review, so that the feedback is current and is actionable on an annual basis. So look forward to working with new Board members and making sure that we get that accomplished as well, because it's very important for us as a Board to develop the discipline of annual reviews.
Mr. Jermaine? I would like to also point out that this is something that quite honestly should have been done years ago, when the Boards had been roomless being as part of it. But I'm very pleased at the way this first go-around has worked. It's given us an opportunity to think in depth about our relationship with the Town Administrator and his relationship with us to discuss it in a way that hasn't been done necessarily at that level between a Board and the Town Administrator in the past. So I think it's very useful. First place, and I come out of industry, so my perspective is sometimes a little different, but the point is, it gives us a chance to discuss issues as we see them. I will just reinforce, it has been a pleasure working with Mike. He was very helpful, offered good comments. And I would likewise say that Kate really helped for some of the comments you two made. So I appreciate that, but I look forward to the next year or two when we have an opportunity to work this out even better depth.
Now, if I might, I just, a little bit of pushback. We have done Town Administrator performance reviews in the past, so it's not like this has never happened before. But it's been too long, and it never happened with this Town Administrator. So I agree with my colleague that it's certainly something the Board takes upon itself, as this Board did, to make sure that we get the performance appraisal process back up and running, if you will, and improved and better. Thank you.
Yes, and also perhaps this also becomes a template that would be useful, Mr. Kozinski, for your performance appraisals of staff throughout Town Hall, because I think no matter what your situation is, whether you are represented by a union or not, immaterial to that is the need for direction and feedback, both constructive and complimentary. So our hope is that this experience for you, you'll take the best ideas from it and consider moving it forward. And I think I'd like to open the floor for your response to this process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first want to say I want to thank the Board for all your support and providing me with the opportunity to serve the people of Melissa. It's been a busy three years, certainly chaotic at times, but also very fulfilling. And enjoyable to work with all the Boards and committees and staff and department heads. And I want to make sure I thank the Board for that and for your support, encouragement, and guidance to me in many ways over the past three years. And I think that this document, this review within the tool itself will provide me with a lot of guidance moving forward, understand better the viewpoints of the Board, although, I will say, even though this hasn't been a full-on review until now, there's been a lot of conversations with different Board members individually, a lot of feedback that has been helpful as well. And I just want to, like I summarized in my comments, I certainly agree with the vast amount of comments and reviews given, and I will certainly reflect upon those and work to put those into action for the betterment of the community. So I thank the Board, thank Kate for all her help in this process. Also take the opportunity to thank all the department heads and staff for the support they provide me and the job that I try to do here. Without them, none of this would happen, the services wouldn't happen. So I want to take this opportunity to do that. And special recognition for Karen and Lauren in my office, for all the hard work they do in keeping everything running smoothly and keeping me out of trouble to the most part. So I appreciate that, and I think things have been greatly improving here over time, and I expect that to continue, COVID-19 notwithstanding. And again, I want to thank the Board for your support through the whole process. So that's really all I have, Madam Chair. And I look forward to working with the Board in the years ahead and continuing moving Melissa positively into the future.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, and thanks to all who worked on this, because developing it from the ground up definitely required more preparation time on the front end. And special thanks again to Town Council. I'm moving on to Agenda Item Number 20117. This is actually interesting timing juxtaposed to what we just did, which is a discussion about pre-meeting postings of select Board public meeting materials as well as post-meeting Zoom recordings. So let me tell you how this was raised. Just as we had with the town Facebook page, we have some inconsistencies and therefore some mixed expectations with respect to the availability of public materials in advance of a public session, select Board meeting. The Planning Board and Finance Committee both post all of their materials using a link to the website, which makes these public meeting materials, specifically non-executive session, universally available. And however it has occurred over time, it was difficult to track any specific edict or memo, but in where one of our fiscal year 20 goals was to better inform, engage, and empower residents, it seems to me that we've all had, that members of the Board were somewhat in the experience of receiving a document too late to have the opportunity to thoughtfully go through it. And consequently, the only person who did have that access, Town Council, was the one who had to summarize the contents and had the advantage of having had that opportunity for review. And I would like to propose that the Select Board vote on a policy to post the public meeting materials pro terminus with our receipt thereof, and they can certainly be watermarked, that's stamped as draft or pending meeting or something like that, to indicate that they are preliminary. And then should any of it need to be replaced, which rarely happens, but sometimes, that can be accomplished. But in doing that, I think we would be making good on our goal of better informing, engaging, and empowering residents through the public meeting process. So that's the first part of this conversation, and I think we should probably take it in two parts. And I think I would like to ask Attorney Fedorov, who has a big review of this, perhaps to address how this would work. And again, we have town Boards and committees right now that do this without any, as a standard practice that has been going on for a decade. So there's just an inconsistency that I'm hoping we can fix.
Yeah, so relative to the performance evaluation that I just spoke about, the public meeting law decision essentially gave two avenues to deal with the potential deliberation that could occur by disclosing to each other the individual evaluations. And that was to, you know, have a public release of the information at the meeting, where you could post it online contemporaneously with the submission to the Board members. So yeah, different towns do it differently. About half of my town posts their documents, some post with a PDF, some post with a link, others still follow the rule of you get your package in the regular post mail, each individual member, so for them, it would be more difficult to publicly post that. But yeah, about half of my towns have the select Board package. Apart from, of course, executive session, if there's anything that's potentially insensitive, you would ask us for help to determine whether or not it should be publicized in advance. About half of them do.
I'd like to open up the floor to my colleagues on this particular issue. Mr. McCaffrey? Or Mr. Jermaine? Mr. Jermaine, you want to go in first? Where are you, by the way? Are you in a winery? Where is that beautiful picture? You have to unmute.
I'm starting you to act.
Oh, okay, very nice. Yep.
Go ahead, Mr. McCaffrey.
Yeah, I certainly think this is an area that can be reviewed. It's a policy decision that the Board's going to have to make, and I think this is something for the new Board to take up. I don't, this Board should be dictating how the next Board decides to work with the disclosure requirements.
Mr. Jermaine?
Well, I happen to think it's something that we need to seriously consider. I have some reservations only because there are some times that we have items on the agenda that in fact do have multiple changes in the packets that we're getting in a real period of time. And I really want to misconstrue as to why some of the changes are taking place. It's a double-edged sword, so I guess, I've been thinking about it for a while when I saw this draft come through, and I'd like to defer my decision. I've got to think about this a little more, is what it boils down to, because I have some feelings that are permanent with respect to it.
Are there any other comments from anybody else on the meeting, on this particular issue? Can we take a vote? Can we take a vote, even if it's a non-disposition on this, so we can kind of wrap the discussion? I would make a motion that we do so, that we vote on this particular policy as a group.
I think it's not right at this time to do so. I have some thoughts, and I just need to think about it, and I'd like to bounce some of these off of Mr. Kaczynski as well, so I prefer not to right now.
Okay. And the second piece of this, and Karen's going to shake her head, is that the state has an expectation for us to have generated written minutes coming out of public meetings, and with everything that's been going on, that has been not an attainable goal of late. And my proposal is that in good faith, that we post these Zoom meeting recordings on the Select Board page, so that we are still trying to meet the burden of record, public record, coming out of a meeting, so that if anybody is so inclined to review these videos, they will do so, and then let the catch-up happen with respect to minutes. And I'm wondering, Attorney Federoff, if that's a reasonable way to kind of plug this dike?
Yeah, so under the open meeting law, your minutes are supposed to be prepared and approved within a reasonable time, and they recently defined that to be within the next three meetings, unless there's good cause. And I think coronavirus is good cause, but if someone were to complain about the lack of minutes, you know, a good faith attempt to try to inform the public like that would be helpful in the response, because the idea is to get the information out there, you know, in whatever form, and it might leave the Division of Local Government to excuse it.
Madam Chair, just to add, just to add a comment, since I am the official minute taker here, just that people are clear, when I'm running these Zoom meetings, I'm running the Zoom meeting. It is very difficult to take minutes and run a Zoom meeting at the same time. Typically, when we have a regular meeting, I sit with my laptop, and you'll see me typing away. I can go back to the minutes after the fact and just add a few things, then submit it to the Board. That is not the case. I have to write notes as I'm going along, try to go back and review the meeting, and then try to find time to type them up. Unfortunately, with everything going on, that's not happening, so I have a whole stack of handwritten notes. But what I did do today, Loring, as to your point, is I did post all of the Zoom meetings. I know, Kate, that that is now legal, the meetings are done, we've been putting, they're on cable. So I went on, so if anyone is looking, and you go under Meeting Minutes on the Select Board page, you will see that there is, it will say Select Board Meeting Agenda, whatever, 5/11, it will have the agenda, and then it has the link to the meeting itself. So I did do that as hopefully a stopgap in the hopes that somehow we're going to find time to fix this. If I had somebody who could be doing minutes while I was running the Zoom or vice versa, that would be helpful, but since we are short-staffed, that's where we're at.
That's super helpful, Karen, and I will say you are not at all alone. Everyone's trying to struggle with this. It's a new platform, the virtual meetings, and it creates a whole host of new complications, but, you know, good and bad, and everyone's trying to navigate through, and that's really helpful to approach the facts, I think it really does show good faith attempts to get the information out there.
And I do have them handwritten, it's just that nobody wants to read them but me at this point, so it's a matter of having time to sit and type them.
Like my notes.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, could I ask a question? I guess I'm a little confused, because my understanding of the statute that allows these Zoom meetings is, number one, it requires that they be recorded and made available to the public, so I'm not sure we've got, and we've thoroughly complied with that, I mean, as far as I'm aware, is that not the case?
So the way the statute reads is that if you don't have the capacity, like one town that can't allow the public to access the meeting when it's going on live, so that would be participation by the public, you know, just like walking in the Gordo Sutman's meeting, if you cannot do that, then you're mandated to post a recording of the meeting, and it could be audio or it could be video, depending upon what your technological capabilities are, but regardless, in the end, you're still supposed to create what's called the official minutes.
Yeah, well, we're the minutes, I mean, there's no use for not doing it ultimately. We've got to find a way to get it done, because it's the public record that's required by law, but if we have, what I'm hearing is the Zoom meetings are posted now.
Yes, they have always been posted at cable, Jim, we just hadn't posted them on our official Select Board site, so.
So it's available, and it's totally appropriate, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
And as long as we have Zoom meetings, I see there's no, I think there's every reason to continue to do that.
Yes, I would agree.
Attorney Federoff, has there been any thought to how remote participation in public meetings is going to change or continue in some realm after, or is that just too far down the road of future meetings?
No, I don't know. They would have to amend the open meeting law to allow it to continue as is. Of course, you always had the option of using remote participation if you had a majority of your members, a core, and merely present, including the Chair or the person who's sitting in for the Chair. So that's already existing. Whether or not there'll be modifications by the legislature because they feel the experience was positive, I can't say either way.
They obviously did not attend the meeting of the Norfolk County Advisory Board last week, if they thought it goes well. That was not very well. If you have a meeting with multiple people where there's, let's call it spirited discussion, that's rather wild.
Yeah.
Write that down in the minutes, if you would like, Karen.
Yes.
A little wild.
It got wild.
Meetings that have been a little hairy, but.
It was, it was not a pretty sight or sound, I can tell you.
The video makes a real difference, I have to say. I have one that was just audio, and that's a little hard, because people tend to step on each other because you can't see the lips moving. But Milis is the most well-run, I have to say. Kudos to you guys. The most well-run meeting I've been to. I mean, great, excellent, excellent job, I have to say.
Yay!
I think that that's certainly the case. Just go to another one, and you'll see.
I say this because Jim's technological prowess has really gotten us.
You know, Jim has led the way for this, I will say.
No, it's Loring's leadership, let's put it right up.
Yeah, no, it is.
Aaron's willingness to send a link at the last minute, so we find it.
Well, I will say, you know, Loring, thank goodness that Loring has, is someone who's had, you know, some sort of dealings with this and is more computer savvy, but we have learned this on the fly. I think we've done our right, considering we've learned it on the fly, and people have been patient. And right now, actually, Loring is trying to share her screen, and I don't see where that is. Loring, I think you'll have to ask me to share the screen.
How do I do that?
On the very bottom of your Zoom, it should say Share Screen in green.
Yeah.
If you click that.
That's where I've been going.
Did you click on that?
The host has disabled the screen share.
Oh, for me? Try it again.
You are the host.
I am the host, but I can't see where you're asking me to screen share.
You just have to go into your settings. You don't need my request, you just need to go into your settings.
Into my settings.
As the host.
Uh, hmm. I'm not sure where I do that. Usually it pops up and says Loring is requesting to share her screen, and I just hit okay. Can you do that?
I've been doing it.
Ah, hold on, we'll figure this out in a minute. I just can't figure out where I would do that. Going back to screen share here. Bear with us, people, we were just saying, we were good at this.
This is Murphy's Law.
Yeah. Ah, try this. Is it working? No.
Here we go.
Did it, did it do it?
I think so, we'll see.
All right.
Look at that.
It was Murphy's Law, Kate, that's how it goes. All right, so Loring, it's all you now.
All right, I think I can do full screen. Yeah, let's see, it's not going to show. Uh, we'll do full screen here. There we go. How's that?
Ah, it's good.
Is that too full? Is that too full, though?
Yeah, that looks good.
All right.
Looks good on the TV monitor here, too, so I think the people from home should have a good view.
Well, I'm sure they're all getting out their popcorn. Jim's getting out his Scotch, so, and I'll toast to both of you. Welcome to the first Zoomcast State of the Town Address, which of course is necessitated by our current adjustment to social distancing, and it has our Town Government continuing to operate, but with rotations of Town Hall staff, delivery of information by email or a VIN, and of course, without the joviality of in-person meetings. What this has taught us all is whether as a new homeschooling parent or guardian, unexpected members of the new remote workforce, and yes, elected boards and appointed committee members, is that when faced with a crisis, we can emerge with new skills and strengths that will be beneficial in the long term. The addition of remote contributions and attendance expands the logistical possibilities for more Town participants and government, and that is a good thing. We can reinvent if we want to, and if we are compelled to. The we've always done it this way axiom of any Town Government has been forever shattered. It simply had to be. The more changes there, and more changes are certainly ahead, because in a tough economy, the need to be daring, to challenge conventions, and even to be entrepreneurial is essential. Reinvention is the theme of 2020, and certainly the back half of fiscal year 20. To harness change, make it our ally, learn from it, give new ideas a chance, to build community engagement when you can't meet with people, improve service delivery, create reporting accountability, and widen information access, and strengthen financial efficiency. This is what our taxpayers expected us to do. And tonight, as Chair, I will report on your Select Board, what we have been doing across these standards as we ticked off our fiscal year 20 goals, undaunted by the coronavirus crisis. Being resilient and having to be the essential solution to a problem is in fact what we've told our employees, our families, and yes, the high school class of 2020. And if you were among the throngs of residents and families who were wildly cheering for the graduates' rolling rally from the curbs all along Town, in what I hope will become a new tradition, and I think there was wide, wide-felt sentiment about that, they had, their smiles said it all, they really have made lemonade from their lemons, and so will Milis heading into a difficult fiscal year 21. So we will look to new things, implementing public, private, and municipal partnerships, achieving some functional consolidations to right-size governments. These are not new ideas, they've in fact been the guidance of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, which is our state's professional association for municipal leaders and vendors, whose conferences and training programs might board colleagues, our Town Administrator, and our Town Government Department Heads attend throughout the course of the year in order to absorb best practices. This State of the Town Address is both a privilege and a duty of the outgoing Chair, who will not get emotional, because I refuse. My board and colleagues, as well as our Town Administrator Mike Kaczynski and Director of Operations Karen Buret, have had an opportunity to contribute their input, and I've incorporated their ideas, as well as from those from our community in the form of questions that came to me or comments that they wanted me to address. The content is what you wouldn't expect, a recap of fiscal year highlights, as were championed by the Select Board in conjunction with Town Professionals and Volunteers to improve community service with government accountability, and second, some forecasting and perhaps some unfinished business that will require tough decision-making for fiscal year 21, which begins in just 16 days. Yesterday, it was March, and suddenly we have arrived at July. It's just impossible to imagine that. This is a little bit like writing an Oscar speech when you get up to the podium, and you just hope and pray that you have remembered everybody to acknowledge and thank, and then as soon as you get down from the stage, you realize the four people that needed to be on this list. So this is a giant thank you in part, because there's no way I will remember everybody on my own personal behalf, as well as for the Board. But I also want to acknowledge that these are not normal times. These are in fact very difficult times, and to just pretend that that is in fact not the case would be to not acknowledge the entire seismic shift that we've all been living through. We are immersed in great uncertainty as we navigate our lives through the first global pandemic in a century. How schools and universities will look this fall is a work in progress. In Milis, our inventive Corps of Teachers and Aides are rewriting what it will mean to change lives through education, under new and immense pressure of these unprecedented social distancing circumstances. We will need to be patient with that process, even though we find it tough as advocates to do so for our kids. We have restrictions that are hard to accept, they're even uncomfortable, but yet we do it. We can't visit our beloved elders with the freedom of the past, and yet they are the most isolated among us. We are defining social and safety guidelines for wearing masks. Together, we learn as we go, and with our local experts, especially our Board of Health Director John McBay, who could not be with us tonight, he certainly earned a day off, but his dedicated team of nurses and clinicians have been helping us as a Town to define our new normal. And we will all have to take care of ourselves, of one another, physically, mentally, and emotionally. We will all need to exhibit empathy, compassion, patience, and flexibility, even when it's hard to do so. And I want to acknowledge that everybody who is in elected office currently was required to stand fast beyond their intended terms, and we want to thank you for doing so. For three months, we've been distanced physically to be safe, healthy, and compassionate, all the while, the Town Government has continued to deliver services, and the employees in all departments are to be applauded for how they have adapted, and how we will continue to do so with a new style of election next week, and Town Meeting to follow on June 29th. Our Fire Department and our Department of Public Health have been on the front lines of this pandemic, from policy setting and implementation, data collection, and certainly to respond to residents in need of information or medical transport. We live amid first responders who valiantly work to save COVID patients or provide personal connections to our elderly family members that we cannot. This is bravery and selflessness that is uncommon. We salute all of you as employees, volunteers, friends, and neighbors who have put your personal safety on the line to respond to those in dire need. As relates to question one on our ballot, as Mr. McCaffrey said, the reverse side, don't forget. When I first raised the importance of encouraging inclusion in our government by moving with the 292 towns across the state that have adopted the name Select Board, that word looked entirely gender-based. But as we speak tonight, sadly and profoundly, we are reminded with every dismal story that tells of a senseless murder of a black or African American incomprehensibly by the neighborhood police, that equality has become a very potent conversation for our dinner table, our classroom, and in everyday family and professional life. We can only fight racism and xenophobia if we talk about it, and for that, I want to acknowledge that while he and his officers and dispatchers, dispatchers, listened to hostile chants from across the street empowered by the freedom of speech, Police Chief Chris Seifire had long before issued the unambiguous statement that is on your screen tonight, condemning the behaviors of police that do not reflect the training or the philosophy of the Milis Police Department. That should stand as a statement of community, respect, civility, and solidarity. We aren't going backward. This is a time for societal and fiscal momentum, so let's move forward. The Select Board of this, of this configuration has been working hard to anticipate and to drive change, and that is evident in the mammoth accomplishment that really was, was still made possible across our fiscal year goals, which are available on the website. They stand as a report card of what we set out to do and managed to accomplish to better our Town even with the disruption of coronavirus. We have begun our first Economic Development Committee and funded a quarter-dedicated Economic Development Director and Planner, very ably with Bob Weiss, and that move could not have been more prescient or more important to our Town, and that's why it was the number one fiscal year 20 goal of your Select Board. We didn't need a pandemic to tell us how important it is to build and support our business community, and now to rebuild it and sustain it. Now with the energetic reopening Task Force of Business Owners and Independent Consultants, and it's make it in Milis. and its Make It in Millis Welcome Back Campaign with its flurry of activities, the effort to drive customers back to downtown is underway. And we want our local businesses of all kinds to know your town government is here to help and to get out of the way to support your success. We share your urgency and your angst, which is why at our earliest chance with the state reopening regulations for restaurants before us, we turned on a dime and approved the required local safety guidelines that would help us to help you. In this case, by passing policies for using new outdoor spaces that were town-owned for restaurants and for streamlining your permitting paperwork in order to get your employees rehired and your customers back. We understand that it is business that creates employment and taxes, and we know that your livelihoods are at stake. And we are your partners in your success. At the forefront of one of our first organized economic development efforts, three years ago, a volunteer recreational marijuana committee led a very difficult community conversation that has resulted in $170,000 of host community agreement funds to Millis in fiscal 20. This is pretty notable for the fact that the retail or adult-use side of Comcan was shut for three months due to COVID restrictions. We now have three new cannabis production facilities that will be working within the new regulatory framework by which our town, through the Select Board, will work to license in fiscal 21 in order to allocate impact revenues from local marijuana businesses. I want to retroactively acknowledge and thank this committee for their hard work because change is not easy, and I personally feel they did not receive the credit that they deserved. So bravo and thank you for your leadership, Nicole Riley, Christine Maltinsky, Joyce Boyardi, Dave Schofield, and three Jims, Mr. Borgman, Mr. Riley, and Mr. McCaffrey. Thanks in large part to Bob Weiss's stewardship. The new housing production plan for the next four and a half years has been completed by the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission and certified by the state. This is an important planning tool because it foretells of an aging and declining population over the next 10 years for Millis. And it tells our young town government that too many residents are already cost burdened by housing, which means they spend more than 50% of their annual income on it. This was before record unemployment in the throes of the coronavirus onslaught, which is why the Select Board stepped in to relax tax payment deadlines and fees associated with filing outdoor seating permits by restaurants. It's why supporting economic development and growth of business is imperative and why we have an affordable housing strategy and need to pursue it in order to hit our 10% target of affordable housing, thereby giving the town more control over its residential stock and landscape. Every time we build a new subdivision without affordable housing, we do decrease the required threshold of what is called 40B or Affordable Housing Inventory. This is also why the Select Board will support a couple of articles at the Fall Town Meeting to expand eligibility for tax relief programs for our seniors. We have a study nearing its conclusion to convert the historic Lansing-Millis building and 64 Exchange Street into a revenue-producing landmark that honors our town's namesake but is productive financially. Saving this building and maximizing its financial benefit to the town will be a challenge for the building's serious decay and accessibility improvement needs. When the pandemic becomes manageable, we will want to actively market the beautifully restored Niagara Hall as a revenue venue. We've also been working on infrastructure investments and other ways to improve services to our taxpayers. Last fall, with the School Committee and the Permanent Building Committee and the Elementary School Building Committee, we proudly opened the new Clyde Brown School. And now we can't wait to do it again. We leveraged the Toll Brothers Development at Glen Allen and gained over $3 million in water and sewer improvements that taxpayers did not have to fund. But last fall, when Columbia Gas was abruptly shut down by the governor in the aftermath of the North Shore explosions, it was your Select Board that worked with our state legislators to get this work restarted heading into the heating season. Not doing so would have derailed the entire project, the onboarding of tax-productive housing, and definitely impacted the abutting neighborhoods. So we're really thankful for our legislative contingent that was really helpful to us. And we were definitely going against the tide at the time that we had to do that. To anticipate more facilities options, the Permanent Building Committee, working with the Select Board and the Council on Aging, has just completed a new senior center feasibility study that will be a roadmap for further community discussion. This is really important because our population, our primary demographic, is in fact headed in the direction which I am, which is the senior echelon of the town. Another important commitment of our town was to improve our communication, which we've done now with a new website, which is up and running, a new town Facebook page that is official and for the first time proving that it was actually not something to be feared, but actually to be embraced. We just used it very recently when we were trying to recruit election worker applicants from a broader demographic to move out of the higher-risk categories, given the current health situation. And that message was posted on a Friday, and by Monday, there were 50 worker applicants. So now, out of necessity, we're communicating remotely by Zoom. And in doing so, we have actually engaged more people who are able to participate and attend in a situation that is more conducive to doing so. And we put in place a new performance management process, which you have seen. We fulfilled our obligation to appoint and launch a charter review committee whose members comprise a cross-section of our community. And you heard from the Chair this evening that there will be more to follow. The website and Communication Committee is working in lockstep with the town administrator's office to make sure that you get your information more fluidly. And that will be a conversation that we've all heard will be taken up by the new Select Board with respect to preposting public meeting materials so that more people can engage in this respect. And I'm really proud again to mention that both our town administrator and our fire chief are to be commended for adopting a private-sector approach to their contracts with a performance-management component. And we hope that this in fact is a foundation for stronger personnel and human resources practices to come. Now, we have to be resilient financially. And when I am identified to people who don't know my public service role in Millis, I receive two consistent refrains. Why are we spending so much money for fewer and fewer services? And who do I call about my potholes? So I can tell you that we took our car to the dealer last week because we in fact had an unfortunate visit with a pothole. So I know all about the potholes. The town, our Select Board worked over the last three years in its various iterations supporting the town administrator's rebuild of our town finance department. And this has reflected in more professionalism, sweeping technical compliance and reporting changes that required new skills and a lot more technology on the inside. And I know that our Acting Director of IT, Pete Germain, has had a lot to do with the rollout and continues to work with the team on the inside. One of the aims was to provide reporting transparency to our taxpayers, whose money this is, after all. And if you look at Millis Incorporated as a $36 million operation with two bifurcated budgets, you can see that there's a lot of conversation that needs to happen with the town. And we try very hard to do that. But sometimes, we need to look kind of behind the layer. Last year, our Town General Fund on the municipal side paid out more than $1.3 million for outbound school tuitions, predominantly to tri-county regional vocational school. This trend shows no signs of changing for the shift from conventional schooling to trades. And I've personally read a lot about this because I have been instructing at the university level. And there is definitely a shrinking student population heading into conventional four-year universities. In a private-sector context, the municipal business has been subsidizing the school business for loss of customers. And as a result, we don't have that $1.3 million that we could use for other things, like to heed the call by taxpayers for road maintenance. So sharing going forward is something that we really should look at. And I hope will continue to be on the agenda of the people who are in the positions of leadership. We had a success in this realm. As we heard tonight, the beautiful co-marked tennis and pickleball courts adjacent to the Clyde Brown School will be opening. The construction is in the home stretch. They are absolutely beautiful. And I just personally regret that it required so much negotiation to accomplish because we are all one town. All of our taxpayers pay for the school. And it just, I think at the end of the day, just like Facebook, the arrival of these courts will be so universally popular across so many ages that we will be wondering what was all the stress about. And hopefully, this sharing opportunity will be a blueprint for conversation around future fields replacements, to include football, where lacrosse and soccer are other field sports, and co-marking is again a very familiar process. The DPW budget is the second-largest in our town, followed behind the schools. The establishment of a stormwater utility wasn't popular, and we are in fact going through an expected hearing and resolution process as we tweak some of the kinks. Millis is a small town. We have limited resources to pay for these myriad of unfunded and unrelented EPA and Mass Department of Environmental Protection mandates. Stormwater was not our idea, but getting ahead of it was. And we did so, led by the Select Board, with community input. Can we do better? Perhaps. Are we learning? We are. I would submit that it would be worth still having the conversation about dividing up stormwater bills into quarters and adding them to an overall quarterly enterprise bill. It's done in other towns. I don't think it's as difficult as we hear that it might be. And I think it would be an extremely popular move with our taxpayers. We have to live within our means. Road maintenance keeps coming up as the collateral damage due to lack of funding. Improvements to the DPW management infrastructure were of great interest to the Select Board. And the Select Board authorized a consultant study that came back and said that the strategic management improvements, the plans to install an asset management program and work order program were in fact tools that were really on target with improved management. And in fact, these tools will work much like the fantastic work of the Capital Planning Committee. And that now becomes a tool for us to look at one year, two year, five years down the road to see what major improvements, what new acquisitions will in fact have to be improved. And so I want to thank everybody, certainly Mr. McCaffrey, for whom this was both a passion and a very important commitment. But the Capital Planning Committee has given the town a really important planning tool going forward. I want to say that the town administrator and all town departments are to be congratulated for their efforts to secure grants as help to save money, to withstand tough financial times, and to be able to convert their efforts into essential professional services by subject expert consultants, to acquire equipment, and otherwise to expand resources and capacity when they otherwise could not do so. We don't have a self-funded contingency grant writer in Millis. So to acquire grants well over $1 million in fiscal 20 is reflective so favorably of an organizational culture that is about trying hard. These grants have come in and been applied to DPW equipment and training, the Munis Financial Services onboarding, more software and IT, for which Mr. Germain and Mr. Harlow received state recognition, Fire Department equipment and training, police cruiser equipment, a variety of legislative earmarks, including a Council on Aging ban, less-expensive renewable solar power programs, and a slew of other environmental planning and preservation programs and reports that are required by the state and that we otherwise could not afford. So that's a real tribute to everybody who made that happen. So on to our future. Where do we go from here? We can't compare services and how other towns do things. We go to these conferences and we come back and we say, well, Wellesley does it this way, and Medway does it this way. It's really important to calibrate what our expectations are of Millis Incorporated against a comparably-sized and financed town. That doesn't mean that we can't learn from them. And what we're hearing from the Massachusetts Municipal Association is that a shared services model needs to be on our community's agenda for fiscal year 21. It's not new, but Millis has only had a few experiences with it, from working with the Fire Department and consortium buying of salt and other products. So it's something that I think going forward, I would say to the leadership, it's important to consider that going forward. Taxpayers are telling us that they are tapped out. And the Capital Planning Committee's fantastic work with their long-term view of asset forecasting will give us more tools to manage costs. And we will be effective in saying to the taxpayers, these are no surprises. Everything is very transparent. There are a number of possibilities that we could consider. We could be looking at functional mergers. We could be looking at municipal partnerships. We could be looking at regionalization, which is an education model that is not new. But if we have declining enrollment and increased costs, it seems to me dispassionately that it's a very needed opportunity, at least, to take a look. An obvious obligation of every one of us is to be counted in our 2020 census because this sets funding that we receive from the state for the next decade. Public-private partnerships are not new to government, and we have a variance of one with Comcan. But that is now a four-and-a-half-year revenue source to the town. And reliance upon it to fund a school resource officer is going to set up a budget problem, assuming the position continues long into the future. Millis will be embarking on a superintendent search to identify a leader who is confident, inventive, and with a history of being collaborative with their municipal counterparts. We will be looking for somebody for our town who also is financially savvy and has some really new ideas. Our Charter Review Committee, you've heard from tonight. They're looking at best practices for municipal government to better serve all of us. Among the items being considered is certainly expansion of this board from three to five, and a variety of other options. One update for Millis that the Charter Review Committee will not have to tackle is question one on our ballots, which asks us to make the move to Select Board permanent. Last January, after more than 90 years, the association that was, the Millis Selectmen Association, updated its name to the Massachusetts Selectmen Association, updated its name to the Massachusetts Select Board Association. So prior to this last fall, our town meeting voted in favor of this change for our whole rule charter that was fully endorsed by the Select Board. So now we have an opportunity with our vote to complete that circle and submit this for legislative approval. We have a lot of need to improve our ideas around public transportation, as well as access through bike trails and sidewalks so that we can really support the rebound of our business community. Roads aren't going to build themselves. We have tried in the past. I believe Mr. McCaffrey was a big advocate for a multi-year sustaining roads, maintenance, and improvement program. And clearly, if our budget is finite, then that's something that perhaps we should take a look at. And I'm just really grateful for the opportunity to have served. And I'm mindful of a quote that I learned as a co-ed, and it seems particularly timeless today. Coming together is a beginning. Staying together is progress. Working together is success. And that sums up my experience serving Millis as an elected member of the Select Board and how we, residents of all ages, employees and volunteers, have to approach fiscal 21. We have to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. We all have votes. We all have ideas. And the best thing to do with both is to use them. There is no "I" in "team" for anyone who wants to step forward to serve on a board or committee. You're making a commitment that your family must support. We have more than 30 committees of equally energetic residents who give of themselves simply for the satisfaction of knowing that they did their part to make our town better by doing so. This is not news to my Select Board colleagues who both have considerable public service lineage, as do their spouses. All of us have required sacrifices for our families to serve. So I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, to every voter, to every resident who gave me personally an opportunity to make a difference, and with my colleagues, past and present, to lead for change. And yes, I want to specifically thank my husband, Michael, who has been my 12th man. who has been my 12th man and unfailing lead patient. In Girl Scout parlance, we are taught to leave the campsite better than we found it. And tonight, we turn the page toward fiscal year '21, a new Select Board, and new committees. Because of the hard work of so many residents who serve on the board and serve in our government, we have done better, and we will continue to do so. So we, the Select Board, and I, as your outgoing chair, thank all of you, but most especially those whose tenures are ending for the time and the heart that you have put into this effort. And from there, I would like to acknowledge everybody on this call, our town administrator, Karen Burey, who keeps me out of trouble more times than you could know, town council, my colleagues, Jim and Pete, for this very lovely surprise. And I would like to make my final motion to adjourn. For which we need a second.
I'm sorry, I got on mute. Thank you, Madam Chair. I second.
Terrific. I will pull the outgoing...